This conference will now be recorded.
Let us try to understand certain basic fundamental points related to our configuration which we are going to start from Monday onwards. As we discussed yesterday, we will be starting our basic fundamentals related to SAP configuration from Monday onwards but before we understand how to do configuration, we need to understand certain prerequisite points. We need to understand certain prerequisite points to make sure that you will be conceptually understanding what configuration you are doing and why you are doing that. Point number one, we will try to understand. Let me put. Basic. prerequisites. For creating a company code. Those who are not talking, please be on mute. Here first point. Name of the company. Along with. Along with the products. And services. They are. Dealing with. This is very, very important. Name of the company along with the product and services they are dealing with, this is important, meaning when you are talking about your configuration, everybody talks about in SAP FICO. That I have learned these many topics or I have practiced this topic, X, Y, Z and all. Everywhere, every topic is configured with respect to a company code in SAP FICO. Tomorrow, even when we start our configuration or any topic that you are dealing with in SAP FICO, everything is connected to a client or everything is connected to a company or to a company code. When we know every topic is connected to a company code, you have to pay very good attention at your company code. Most of the times what we will do, we will create a company code just like that. When I say we will create a company code just like that, it is not supposed to be just like that, it is supposed to be the company along with the product service that they are dealing with in the market which you are aware of. You are the one who is going to create a company code, you are the one who is going to practice all the topics, you are the one who is going to analyze, understand everything with respect to your company code in your practice environment. If you are not having any clarity regarding your company code or regarding your company along with their business process or the nature of a product service that they are dealing with, practically it is not possible for you to understand what you are doing and why you are doing. It is only possible for you to understand only the configuration, apart from configuration, you will not understand anything. This is going to happen for sure if you are not understanding point number one or if you are not paying attention at point number one. This is very, very critical, total your understanding on SAP FICO is dependent on here. If this point you are paying attention, it is very clear for you to understand entire SAP FICO. Because as we discussed in our previous sessions, we were understanding business process is the key point. Business requirement is the key point. Business process or business requirement, you are going to understand only when you know what is your company, what is your nature of business. Just like that you cannot assume, imagine anything. If you understand a company which is doing a business with a particular product or with a particular service, it is practically possible for us to relate, okay, my company is doing a business with X, Y, Z product or A, B, C services. Accordingly, I can imagine. Accordingly, I can understand, okay, this is how my company is dealing with. This is how my company is dealing with. If these are not clear to you, nothing will be clear to you. I am telling you upfront openly, if this point number one you are not taking seriously, you are not understanding properly, you are not going to understand SAP FICO conceptually. I am telling you, even before I open SAP screen. Just like that you can take any company code, you can practice anything, but that is not the way you or I configure, create, work in any environment if you are in a project. When you know this is not going to happen, you are not going to practice in that way. The way you practice SAP system should be disciplined right from the beginning. This is one of the reasons why I did not give SAP access to everybody so far. Why you were not given, you were not provided with the server access till late is to make sure you are not going to create, you are not going to use SAP in an incorrect way. Because most of you would have already configured SAP system in one way or the other way around, maybe you already practiced with X, Y, Z reasons, you are already working, you are already trained, X, Y, Z reasons, which I don't want to bring into the picture now. Most of you would have already experienced on SAP FICO configuration, I do not know how you were configuring it before. But when we are doing it together in our sessions, I wanted to make sure everybody looks at the system in the similar mindset with the similar approach. Tomorrow, when somebody is facing any problem, I want to make sure everybody is able to help the others what mistakes they are making. Because once we start our configuration. Group will be very active, meaning everybody is starting to do the practice. If anybody is getting any error, they will be starting to post their error messages screenshot in the group and whoever knows that no, this is not correct, this is correct, you can respond. But there I don't want to make sure somebody is making a mistake and then you are giving incorrect guidance, incorrect response that no, not like this, not like that. Then there is no point, there is no control, somebody is already doing it in a wrong way, somebody else is already giving something else in an incorrect way, which should not happen. Wherever possible, we need to make sure we are helping each other. Okay, this is the first point. Second point. Your company. Locations, meaning. Domestic or. International. When I say your company locations, you need to understand whether you are working for a domestic company or you are working for an international company. Here I mean to say, if I take certain companies. Certain companies are available only in one country. Certain companies are available in multiple countries. If you take a company called, let us say Samsung. If I take a Samsung company, I would say Samsung a company is available in India. Samsung a company is available in US. Samsung is also available in Dubai. Samsung is also available in Korea or is also available in China likewise. Samsung is available in multiple countries, I can say Samsung is an international company. Similarly, if I take any other company. Similarly, if I take any other company, let us say if I take Tally Corporation. Let us say Tally Corporation, just an example, is there only in India. If I take any one company which is available only in India, I need to make sure. I need to make sure this is a domestic company reason, this company is available or this company is operating only in India. Likewise, you need to make sure any company that you are taking, you are aware of their business process, how they are operating, how they are working. If these points are not clear, practically it is very, very difficult for us to relate things conceptually. Okay, you need to understand company location, here you are representing how many countries that your company is operating in. Whether your company is operating in one country or your company is operating in multiple countries. Next one. For which location. Location here we are representing the country. We are going to. Implement SAP. Once you understand your company name, company products and services and then the company locations list, India, China, Dubai likewise and then you need to decide for which company, for which country or for which location you are going to implement SAP. Okay, now the term that we have listed here to which location or for which location we are going to implement SAP here, you are representing one thing called. Our. Concept or. Understanding is always. With respect to. Implementation project only. Okay, our concept or our understanding is always with respect to implementation project only. We are not going to talk what will happen if you are in a rollout project. We are not going to talk what will happen if you are in a support project or X, Y, Z project. You are first going to understand what is going to happen, how you are going to define the system if you are working in the implementation project. If you do not know what happens in the implementation project, how you are going to do the implementation, you will not be able to understand rollout, you will not be able to understand support or X, Y, Z. For you to understand rollout, support, upgradation, migration, whatever it is, first thing you should have a very good understanding, clear clarity on implementation project. If you know implementation project, everything is very simple, very easy because in the implementation you are going to talk about overall picture about the company. And how company total business process is brought into SAP. And in this process, you are going to understand so many things which you will not be able to understand from rollout, support or any other thing. Even when you are practicing, always assume that you are working in the implementation project only strictly. Strictly you are going to understand your mind is tuned in such a way, you are in an implementation project. Left, right, left and right, don't do any practice, one company code I will do like this, another company code I will do in another way, please stop doing it. If anybody is already practicing, anybody is already preparing your configuration and all, please stop it. The moment we start our configuration, I want everybody to follow the configuration in this similar way that we are doing here. Because what we do is in a different way, what you would have done is in a different way, what you are currently doing may be in a different way. You are not supposed to follow, if there is any differences in how we are doing it, please stop the way you are practicing the system. Because that will put unnecessary confusions in your mind, for simple, simple things also you will get confused, which you need to avoid right from beginning. Okay, fifth point. Once you understand, once you finalize country for which you are going to implement SAP, we need to understand. Reporting. Requirements. When I say reporting requirements, there are two reporting requirements. Local reporting. And group reporting. When you are talking about reporting requirement, we need to understand local reporting, group reporting, there are two types of reporting basically in any organization. One is your local reporting and the other one is your group reporting, you need to understand what is your client local reporting requirement, what is your client group reporting requirement. Now when you put it specifically, point number one, if I say. Local reporting. Point number seven, if I put group reporting. Let us say, assume that local reporting is. In the country. Where. Company is. Currently. Registered. And. Doing business. Submitting. Financial reports to. Local authorities. Okay, local reporting means it is in the company, it is in the country where company is currently registered and company is currently doing the business and company is currently submitting the financial reports to the local authorities. When it comes to group reporting. This is for all. For all countries. Where business is currently. Going on. And. Financial reports. To be. Submitted. To. Corporate. Or head office. For consolidation purpose. Okay. Group reporting means for all countries, in short wherever you are operating, you are operating in the sense, everything is connected to your point number one. Everything is connected to your point number one, here again the same thing, your company, wherever you are operating, for example, you are operating in ten countries. For all the ten countries or in all the ten countries, you need to make sure the financial statements or financial reports are submitted to the head office or to the corporate authorities. To the head office or to the corporate authorities for the consolidation purpose, this is for your internal consolidation purpose. This is the local reporting is to the country specific local authorities in short, the government officials or the legal or statutory authorities. Next one, you need to understand. Point number eight. Reporting. Or let us say. Financial year. And then. Reporting. Currency. Accounting principles. Financial year, reporting currency, accounting principles. To be. Identified for. Each reporting. For each reporting. When we are talking about financial year, currency, accounting principle to be assigned for each reporting, you are talking about two types of reports here, one is your local reporting, another one is group reporting, you need to identify what is your financial year according to local reporting, what is your financial year according to group reporting, which currency you need to submit the reports as per local reporting and then as per your group reporting. Similarly, which accounting standard, which accounting principle are we using to do the reporting as per local and to do the reporting as per group. You need to identify these point, if these points are not identified, if these points are not clear, again this is going to be difficult for us to set up the system. There are all the basic fundamentals which I am writing, which has got no connection to SAP. They are all not connected to SAP, even if you take any business, even if you look at any system, these are all the mandatory points that should strike your mind before you understand any organization process, any organization setup. Okay, these points are very important as of now, I am not writing everything to avoid confusion. These eight points I want everybody to remember, understand initially. Now if I take an example for these eight points. If I take an example, let us see what it will be. Point number one, let us say. Example for. Each point. Listed above. Okay, if you put example for each point listed above, point number one. You can take any company, any name of the company, for example. Assume that I am taking one company name like. Let us say I will take Dell. For example, if I am taking Dell. If you are taking straight away, you can write Dell, you can write Impaces, you can write Britannia. Any company name, you must be looking at so many company names in and around you even at this moment. You are holding a mobile, look at your mobile phone brand that is a company. If you are holding a mobile, look at your mobile brand that is a company, if you are holding a laptop. Look at the laptop name that is also a brand, that is also a company. If you are looking at your home wall, wall has got a paint, this paint is related to a company, either Asian paint, Nerulet paint or X, Y, Z paint. Similarly, if you are sitting on a chair, chair is also a company because this chair belongs to a company, that company name will be there, Sello, Neel, Kamal, X, Y, Z. Similarly, if you are sitting on a bed, now bed has got a mattress, this mattress is also based on a company. You look at any product, make sure you are able to identify the name of a company. Make sure you are able to identify name of the company, identify name of a company in such a way you know their products. Identify name of a company in such a way that you know the name of a product or service that the company is currently dealing with in the market. You know the company name but you do not know what are the products and services of that company, please do not take such companies. They are not valid companies for you to understand, for you to do your practice. At the end, it is not about whether you are taking a top company, whether you are taking a small company. At the end, it is all about whether you are understanding any information related to your company or not. If you know the details related to your company, it is easy for you to practice, understand. If you do not know any information about your company, just a company name is very trendy, company name is very catchy, it's interesting, you are taking it, your FICO will not be interesting, your config will not be interesting. You are technically doing all the settings but logically, conceptually, functionality point of view, you are not able to relate, you are not able to understand anything. That is reason, avoid your company, avoid your company if you do not know name of a product, name of a service. Okay, now simply what I will do is. I may be taking something called. Toshiba. If I take Toshiba. Everybody knows that there is a product in the market from Toshiba, which product is there in the market from Toshiba?
TV.
Which product you find from Toshiba?
Laptop TV.
Laptops, agree? Agree, you find laptops in short computers, yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, for example, if I take. Apple, what products do you find from Apple?
Mobile phones, laptops.
Mobiles.
Earphones.
iPods.
Earphones.
iPads, laptops.
I can say that phones. We will write one product, then we will elaborate. Similarly, if I take Bose.
Earphones.
R integrated circuits.
Bose earphones, speakers etcetera, okay. If I take. Ilkamal.
Chairs, table.
Chairs, table.
Chairs. Table etcetera, if I say. Demat.
All retail groceries.
Groceries.
Or groceries. Groceries.
Right. And if I take. Let us say. Kinle.
Water.
Water, water.
Water.
Water. If I take Kinle, there is something called water, if I take. Carlong.
Mattress.
Mattress.
Mattress. If I take Kia.
Car.
Car. Car manufacturer something.
Right. If I take. Let us say TBS.
Bikes.
Oil or bikes.
TBS is dealing with bikes. Stephen, can you please mute yourself? Thank you. And then if I take something called.
Harshish.
Sorry?
Harshish.
This one?
Chocolate and syrup.
Ignore my spelling mistakes if you find any.
Yeah, no, 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 that's okay.
Okay. And next one, if I write something else, can you name anyone like this? Which is currently not.
Britannia.
Yes, Britannia.
Philips.
Brita, Britannia is there, what biscuits?
Biscuits, yes.
Okay, Philips, okay. What is there from Philips?
Mushrooms like.
Electric.
Electric.
Elect, electronics.
Yeah.
Parker, Open.
Parker, yeah. HP.
Birla.
HP laptops, correct?
Hmm.
Atos.
Birla.
There is no company called Birla, right, do you find any company name called Birla, that is a group.
Ashok.
Let us say.
Ashok.
Ashok, Leyland, yeah, what is there?
Transports, buses, lorries, buses etcetera.
Bus etcetera, okay. Fine, one product is enough. Once we write one product, we can think what are all the alternative products, accordingly we can fill it up. Hmm, next. What?
Chaiseless.
Indian gas.
Chocolate.
Indian gas, you have.
Petroleum.
LPC gas, okay, yeah.
AC and tanks.
ITC.
Usha sir.
Usha, okay. One sir.
Tata steel.
One minute, let my, this one be brought. I think my Excel is stuck, just give me a minute. Okay. If I take Usha, what is Serin Usha?
Stitching machines.
Take Titan, watch.
Okay, you can take Titan, yeah. Watches.
Yeah.
Now what I want you to do is, I want you to tell a company name. I want you to tell a company name which is not related to the products, services that are currently listed, meaning I don't want any other company related to car, related to bike, related to chocolate, related to watch, related to gas, related to bus, laptop likewise. A company name which, yeah, MRF, you have tires. Correct, next.
Chaiseless.
Castrol.
Oil.
Coca Cola, let us say soft drinks. What next?
Tata. Company.
I will. If you say Tata, there is no company called Tata in the market. Tata followed by some. Tata Steel.
Tata Steel.
Okay, I can say. Steel.
ITC.
Yes.
Steel bars like that.
Ultra Tech.
Havel's, okay. Wires. Wires and switches. Let me put switches. Next.
Reliance.
Tata. Tata is what? Slippers? Or footwear?
Footwear.
Footwear. Yeah. Hmm.
Um, cement.
Reliance.
Pharmaceutical pharmaceuticals.
Ultra Tech, let's say.
Yo.
Cement, yeah. You can take Geo. Geo, you can say telecom.
Rebock.
Rebock is again footwear, okay?
Ramon.
Emerald.
ITC.
Emerald.
Raymond, yeah, let's say clothing.
ITC tobacco.
Chindasi. Tobacco, Chindal is again.
Emerald.
Steel, pack, batteries. Emerald. Batteries, next.
Amazon.
Restaurant.
Sun, farm, unpharma.
IKEA furnitures.
Yeah, Amazon, let's say retail.
Yeah. IKEA, IKEA furnitures.
IKEA furniture, next.
Gas.
Oil India.
Air India.
Airline.
Google Ads.
Yeah. Yeah, next.
Google Ads.
What is that?
Google, Google Ads.
Reliance. Reliance? There is no company called Reliance in the market.
Reliance Digital.
Reliance Digital, it has to be letters. You could tell only Reliance, that is part of a group, you'll have to tell the company name, the registered name of a company with which you will find official letterhead. Reliance Digital, okay, this is, let's say again, electronics.
Gap.
Netflix.
Netflix, you can say.
Sir, NTPC.
Yeah, what is this Nike? Online store?
Beauties.
Oh, this is clothing.
Beauty products. Beauty products, okay.
Service provider like Deloitte and KPMG.
Sir, NTPC.
Deloitte, let's say consulting, NTPC what?
Oil and natural gas.
Hmm? Oil and natural gas.
Power, sir. This is power, uh, over.
No, no, it is a thermal production, NTPC is the power, yeah.
Yeah. Honda, okay, I can say cars. Okay, last one.
HP.
LG.
Tomato. Tomato.
Yeah. Let me put tomato, let's say food delivery. Now, if you look at it, so many companies we were able to write. Right, you were able to write so many companies, meaning, when you're doing a practice, you can take any company like this. When I say you can take any company like this, first point, before you start your configuration, before you start anything else, what I want you to do is, first one, you look at this, first one is what? Toshiba. In Toshiba, you're talking about company which is dealing with laptop, agree?
Yeah.
Now, what are all the alternatives of Toshiba?
Division.
Alternatives of Toshiba, other, other companies who are doing similar business of laptop.
HP.
HP is there, Dell is there, Asus is there, Acer is there. Likewise, there are many other companies, what I want you to do is, when you're looking at it, when you're looking at it, for example, if I take Toshiba. Laptops, other products we will write later on, but at least we need to understand the alternative companies, so that when you're practicing it, you're not finding short of company name, most of the times, we will be finding it difficult to decide which company I need to do it. Randomly, you will always put a Tata, Tata or a Reliance, Birla, XYZ, only selected five, six or maximum ten will strike your mind, other than that, nothing will strike your mind to do the contact. That should not be the situation. For example, if I'm taking Toshiba related to laptop, I can take HP. Okay, I can also take Dell, I can also take Apple.
Lenovo.
Asus. Lenovo. Any other brand related to laptop?
Acer.
Asus. What is that?
Acer.
Asus is, Asus. Asus is there, Asus.
Yes.
Lenovo.
Sony.
Sony.
Acer. Acer.
Acer is listed already.
LG.
Google.
LG.
Google doesn't have any laptop, no?
Samsung.
LG also doesn't have any laptop, Samsung, I think, it is there. Likewise, similarly, if I take anything, for example, if I take this one. If I take this one, what are the alternative companies where you get chocolates?
Dairy milk.
Dairy milk is not the company name. Dairy milk is the chocolate name.
Yeah, yeah, Cadbury.
Nestle.
Nestle.
Explain.
I disagree.
Okay, Nestle is there. Yes, those food chocolates, you'll have to tell, not, don't tell me the material name, I want the company name. Dairy milk is a material name, Cadbury is a company name, agree? True, because dairy milk is the product of the Cadbury. For Cadbury product means is, is a material, yeah.
Parle.
Parle, yeah.
Mistin.
Nestle is already there.
Amol, Amol.
Amol, okay.
Mas.
Mas, okay.
Because.
Which one?
M and N.
Spell?
M and N.
This one?
M and N.
M and N?
M and M. It's a part of Nestle.
No, it's a separate brand, right?
Okay, alright, this is enough, and then let me go to cars, if I go to cars now, what are all the alternative brands for your cars?
Maruti, Tata.
Shalavas, can you please go on mute, those who are having background noise, please be on mute. For cars, I can say Suzuki, Tata Cars.
Maruti.
Maruti.
Suzuki.
Oats. Oats Veyron.
Sir, Mahindra.
Volkswagen.
Mahindra.
Toyota, BMW. Audi, Mercedes.
Audi. BMW.
Mercedes.
And Rolls Royce.
Mercedes, Toyota and so on, Land Rover, so many are there. Right, now if you take any other thing, for example, if I take Demat. Alternatives, I can say.
Metro.
Reliance Mark.
Spencer.
More.
Spencer.
More Spencer.
Metro.
Ratnadeep Metro, yeah.
Big Bazaar.
Lulu.
Seven Eleven.
Walmart.
Walmart is, Walmart is no more, no market.
Big Bazaar, what else?
Lulu.
Seven Eleven.
Lulu and so on. Similarly, if I take anything related to earphones. I take anything related to earphone, I'm talking about Bose, any other?
JBL.
Board. Board, board, board.
JBL.
Sony.
Sony.
No.
Skullcandy.
Sony.
Cenizer.
Noise.
Apple.
AK. Cenizer. I don't know how to write that spelling, ignore it, yeah, next. Marshall. Tony. Marshall.
Samsung.
Google, Samsung.
Samsung, okay, let's say. OnePlus, you also have Apple earphones and all.
Yes.
MI. Right, likewise, there are so many. Now here, we are able to make multiple with the help of one example. Is it possible for us to write so many company names, yes, no?
Yeah, exactly.
Right, in the similar way, you should first look at it, when I say don't do anything, don't think about anything. Whether it is right, whether it is wrong, it is immaterial that you are going to understand, identify whether what you're understanding is right or wrong, once we start our configuration. But initially, I want everybody to do this activity. When I say I want everybody to do this activity, you are able to write so many alternative names. Meaning, tomorrow, when you're, when you want to practice, let's say you're interested in cars, you take a company which is dealing with car. Let's say your favorite car is BMW. Let's say your favorite car is BMW, create a company code related to BMW, put BMW as your company name, practice your SAP FICO with BMW. Now, when you're talking about, I like BMW car, I am creating a company related to BMW, you need to make sure for BMW, these points you understand. For BMW, you need to understand. First point, when you look at it from this, name of a company along with product and services they are dealing with. If I'm talking about BMW, BMW is the company name, fine. What products, what services are available from BMW, point number one, BMW cars, agree?
Yes.
BMW is dealing with car, that is the product, along with car, BMW is also selling accessories, yes or no?
Yeah, yeah, bikes also they are selling.
Right, bikes also they are selling, BMW is also providing service, paid service. Right, now you can tell products and services of the BMW are cars, bikes, accessories and then servicing, am I correct?
Exactly, yes.
Right, we need to take simple, simple example because at the end, which complicated example you're taking is immaterial, that is, nobody is going to look at it. Make sure from your point of view, whether you are able to feel connected to the example, to the company that you're taking or not, it is your understanding, your learning, please make sure you are comfortable with the example, company name that you are taking. Tomorrow, when you're working in a project, your client will tell what is their company, what is their product, what is their service, your client will tell you when you're in a project, you don't need to worry about it, but when you're practicing it, nobody is there to tell you. When you're practicing, nobody is there to tell you, you're not supposed to blindly take whatever comes in your mind, most of the times, if you go like that, you will go wrong. But instead, when you think in a proper direction, when you try to put examples, points in a proper manner, you will not go wrong. Though there are minor mistakes in your understanding, as you move forward, as you progress, you will automatically rectify everything. Okay, according to the point number one, just taking BMW as an example, as everybody knows BMW, I'm trying to relate with BMW. You can replace BMW with any company that will listed below, any company that you wish to take. Now, if I take point number one BMW, I can say, my name of the company is BMW, my products are cars, bike, servicing and then accessory, point number one clear? Right, if I take the company location, do you find BMW only in one country or in multiple countries?
Multiple countries.
If BMW is there in one country, I call BMW as a domestic company. If I find BMW in multiple countries, I call BMW as a international company. International company is nothing but MNC multinational company. Is BMW a local company or a global company?
Global company.
Global company.
It is a global company. If you take from the other way around, is it a domestic company or it is an international company?
International company.
This is an international company, keep in your mind, tomorrow, when you become a FICO consultant, when you're working in any organization, when you're supporting or when you're giving consulting service for any client, majorityly, your clients are international clients. When I say majorityly, your clients are international client, your client is operating in more than one country, most likely, this is how you are going to work tomorrow. When you know, majorityly, you are going to work for a client who is a international client, meaning, they are operating in multiple countries. If you take domestic companies, it is difficult to understand international company. If you take international company, it is very easy to understand domestic company because domestic cases are automatically covered in international scenario, am I correct? Domestic means one, international means more than one. Domestic means only one, international means more than one, when you're more than one, one is already covered or not? If I'm talking about three, I can go to two, I can go to three, only one, I cross one. So, when you're talking about any international company, your domestic scenarios are by default covered. So, even when you're taking an example, here also you need to pay attention, please try to take a company which is operating in more than one country. In short, it must be a MNC multinational company or an international company or a global company. Do not take any company which is available, which is doing business only in single country, please avoid taking such companies for your practice. Avoid taking such companies for your practice because going forward, these companies, these practice will create a problem, will create a confusion which is unnecessary, not at all required. Okay, according to this example, our BMW is a international company or a global company. Third one, for which location we are going to implement SAP. Point number two, you decided, this is a global company, meaning, you can tell that BMW is operating in fifty-five countries. BMW is operating in hundred countries, possible or not?
Yeah.
Possible.
Right, BMW is operating in fifty countries, hundred countries, one-twenty countries, easily possible. Now, you're not going to implement SAP for all the countries together, you will implement one by one. Or based on the phases or based on the phases, let us understand one country first. Out of all the BMW countries, for which country are you going to implement now, it's up to you. It is always recommended, you take a company, it is always recommended, you take a company where you are currently from. If you're from India, you take Indian company, if you're from US, take US company, if you're from Singapore, take Singapore company, if you're from Dubai, take Dubai company, if you're from Europe, take Europe company. Whatever the country that you are currently in, please take that country so that easily you will be able to understand, easily you will be able, you will be able to understand how accounting is made in your country. How accounting is made in your country, then you will feel more convenient, more connected towards the different fundamental points. Once you are clear, then you are, you are free to take any company, any country, there is no confusion. But initially, strictly take country where you are currently in, if you're in India, take Indian company, if you're in Singapore, Dubai, any other country, accordingly, take your company. Okay, now, for example, since most of us are from India, I am going to take BMW India. Or if you're from US, you can take BMW USA Limited. Why I want you to take BMW India, you need to understand, to set up a company in India, how you are going to set up a company? You need to do a registration, yes or no? Without doing the company registration, is it possible for anybody to set up a new company, start new business?
No.
Not possible, it is not only in India, it is common everywhere, even if you want to set up a company in US, you need to register your company name in US. Singapore, you need to do it, now, how you are going to register your company? Meaning, when you register a company name, you are going to call it as a legal name, agree? When I register a company name, that is going to be my legal name, this legal name will be used for my all official transactions. When I say all my official transaction, I am going to represent as a letterhead. When I print any letterhead, when I print any official document, my document must contain the name and address of my company, yes or no?
Yeah.
Right, when I put any stamp, when I put any seal. right when I put any stamp when I put any seal what whatsoever if I open my bank account if I give you any details everything should be on the legally registered name now this legal registered name is nothing but a legal entity because company is nothing but a entity you are doing business legally anybody will do illegal business and then come into S I P possible if you are doing illegal business it is offline no nobody will know that there is a business existing because it is illegal so straight away illegal businesses are ruled out so you have only legal businesses legal business in the name of a company company is nothing but entity you call company or company code as a legal entity now BMW India will become your company code BMW India will also become your legal entity sometimes people may not be calling it as a company code sometimes may not be people may not be calling it as a company instead they may simply call it as how many legal entities are there when somebody is calling how many legal entities are there do not get confused legal entity company company code client these are all used in similar line in similar meaning in the real environment okay now here you are going to implement for BMW India that's it only one line we are implementing for BMW India or BMW US BMW Dubai likewise fourth point when you take our concept understanding is always with respect to implementation project whenever you are talking about implementation project it is representing this client is currently not using S I P whenever you are talking about implementation project it is representing this client is currently not using S I P according to statement is BMW using S I P now or not using S I P
not using
not using
according to point number four BMW India is currently not using S I P now if BMW India is not using S I P
Tally Voice
Tally Edwards right can you hear me
no it's fine
yes yes
right when we are talking about BMW India is not currently using S I P it is presenting BMW India is currently working with either Oracle or Tally or J D Edwards Microsoft Dynamic X Y Z possible
yeah
possible
right any application any application your client is using other than S I P or before coming into S I P is called as A G C system which is system